Let the leaders bear the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where rich is friends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's approve the amendments of the February the fifteenth, two thousand eighteen special meeting and the February twenty, two thousand eighteen regular meeting.
Sabu.
Mr. Baker.
Sabu.
Mr. Wilkerson. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, has anyone signed and speak, Mr. Ellis?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, and we'll go down to the next item, this item number four, public hearings. Everyone knows, uh, we must have a public, two public hearings regarding the, uh, proposed calendar for next school year before the board approved to allow for public input and any questions that any of us or any others may have. So, uh, I'm going to convene that part of it now before you provisions of wet new code eighteen five forty-five for the others to receive comments regarding the post-school calendar for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mink at this time to share with us the calendar and any remarks you might have.
I provided you with a copy of the proposed eighteen nineteen, yeah, go ahead and turn the other one off too, if you'd like to see. The L E Ds, right, Rick? Right.
Wake you up?
Uh, wake you up. I gave you a, also gave you a copy of the current year's calendar so you can kind of see.
We may have a little bit of.
A little lot.
Try to even if I think. Steve.
And we're good.
Can you see them? As well as a, um, school calendar guidance booklet. It seems like every year when we sit down and get ready to develop the calendar, the guidelines, uh, grow in length. And actually, um, it's kind of gotten to the point that there are not a whole lot of flexibility in development calendar because there's so many requirements in there where you have to have certain, uh, dates established from your faculty senate, uh, for your continuing ed, your curriculum development days and those sorts of things. So, uh, other than determining start and end days and when your breaks are going to be, everything else is pretty much locked in. So, uh, our, our committee met on February the eighth, I think it took us maybe an hour to develop the calendar because just how the guidelines kind of leads you into, um, such an element. But if you look, uh, you'll see that we're bringing our employees back on August the thirteenth. And this year, we brought our employees back on the tenth. So it's pretty close, you know, that's, that's, that's been a desire, uh, goal of the board the past few years that we try to bring our employees and our students back around the same time so that people can plan and know that that's going to happen. So, you'll also notice at the beginning of the year that instead of bringing the employees back for four days before we bring the students back, we've reduced that this year to three days. And we moved one of those continuing ed or what used to be called continuing ed is now curriculum development, we moved one of those days to January the second. And we had, the, the committee talked about what had happened this year, I mean, we ended up with a pretty harsh, uh, stretch of weather over Christmas break and when we came back, we came back to some issues in our buildings that had we had our employees back first, uh, we wouldn't have been in that situation or would have been in a better situation when the students came back. So we, uh, we moved one of those days to January the second. Uh, we don't have to use it for makeup for inclement weather, that's a day that our teachers will be able to plan and collaborate in any district-wide activities and training that we may have going on that take place on that day as well. So, um, the breaks themselves, I've noticed, pretty much are in line with what we did this current year. We'll be out in a week-long stretch of time over Thanksgiving. Christmas break is going to run just a little longer than it did this year because Christmas, uh, is on Tuesday instead of the Monday, as well as the holiday for New Year's is, is on a Tuesday instead of a Monday, everything is shifted over about one day. So it's, it's a nice break for students, it'll also be a nice break for employees as well. Especially, they want to really like the idea of bringing the employees back before we bring the students back. Uh, the spring break, we decided because of the testing window to have the break in front of, you know, the week before Easter. Easter's on, on April twenty-first next year, which is really late. So, that was the decision or the reason for placing the spring break where we did. Plus, it's, it's a long stretch and if you go, uh, if there's no inclement weather and we go from, you know, January to April, that's, that's a long time to be off without having the breaks. So we decided as a group that we just had it there. Now, one thing you'll notice that's, that's neat to this calendar, different from this current year's calendar, is with this, these options that are now available to boards of using your crew time, if you have it, uh, to make up for lost instruction or to have up to five days where teachers, uh, are able to come to school and work and plan and collaborate, uh, together while students stay home and count those as instructional days. Uh, the legislature last year when they changed the guidelines, uh, to enable boards to be able to do so and take advantage of that at group time, referred to those as professional learning days. So, there are, there are four of those within the calendar. You've got one on October twelfth, another one the day before Christmas break, December twenty-first, February the eighteenth, as well as April the twelfth. What I, what I, uh, what the calendar committee and what we discussed was this, that we could get away from the, those days are also, let me point out that those days are also faculty senate days. Uh, there's six faculty senate days during the course of the year, should have started here. The first one has to be on the first P day of the year, the last faculty senate day has to occur on the last P day of the year. The other four, the calendar guidelines establishes when those have to be. So those, that, those dates on October twelfth, December twenty-first, February the eighteenth and, uh, April the twelfth, it's set out in the guidelines. In years past, those faculty senate days and this year, uh, those faculty senate days end up being two-hour early dismissals. So kids are there for part of the day, we dismiss them early so that the faculty senate can meet. What the committee discussed and what we've included in the calendar is that instead of those being two-hour early dismissals, that this coming year, those be day-long faculty senate days or, uh, opportunities for teachers to meet and plan as well as have their faculty senates. So teacher trainings, faculty senate, and, and get away from two-hour early dismissals for faculty senate days and also eliminate the need to have three-hour early dismissals throughout the school year for similar activities for teachers to plan and collaborate and for us to provide them the training on the assessment. So by making those four days, day-long opportunities for us to be able to work with our, our teachers, we avoid, uh, the attendance issues that we run into, attendance atrocious on those two-hour day, delay days or two-hour early dismissal days.
You talk about student attendance.
Student attendance. And, um, and the three-hourly dismisses. So those, those four days is for your consideration, um, we've already, we've shared this calendar, we've pushed that out there and everyone's aware, uh, that that's, that's something that we're looking to do this year, for that coming year. And I'll only say this too, we, we put the calendar out there, it's been out there for some time now and we've had very little, uh, feedback from teachers, uh, parents or anyone for, as a matter of fact. The only question I've had raised and some of you all that serve on that calendar committee may have heard some comments, was just about the placement of spring break. Uh, you know, I've had one or two, uh, teachers who've mentioned to me, um, about having spring break after Easter, which, you know, we, we could have looked at that, but the testing window, being the last twenty-five instructional days of the school year, you know, it would have ran into it. So, you know, that's something I've told, uh, told those teachers that maybe next year we'll be looking through this. The, uh, there's, there's nine days built into this calendar for, uh, to make up for lost instruction. So you've got six O S days scattered about like we've done in the past, you have your C D day on, on January the second, and then a P M day, which there now, that's, that's new language, a verbage for us, it's, it's a, a professional meeting day, which would occur after, uh, we come back from the spring break. So all the O S days, the C D day, the P M day, and that last P day in June are all potential days that we could make up for lost instruction.
Jeff, I have a question about these out of calendar days. I know you've not quite gotten there yet, but in looking at current year's calendar and the proposed calendar for next year and reading the little block over here where it talks about out of calendar days, um, my understanding was, probably just me not understanding this well, that the dates this year for spring break are absolute, those can't be touched. That isn't true, is it?
That's not true.
Okay. So we could, though, we don't do that probably, but if it looked like we were going to have insufficient days at the end of the year for any reason to make up, we could use spring break days both this year and next year to make up for lost instructional time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Those days are options.
Okay. I, I, I just misunderstood that when, the last time we talked about this, I thought certain days were absolutely, we couldn't use those, but in looking at both calendars, it appears that we could if we had extended agencies for some reason this year.
For some reason.
We often get those huge storms in March, either snow or rain, so I just wonder.
Yeah, those, those days are out there right there if we need them.
And, and really, there's nothing other than preference that says that we choose to use that O days at the end of the year versus O days during spring break?
Right.
Okay.
I have a question, Jeff. Uh, on the, uh, little instructional recap, recap work, it shows five P L days, green days.
Those are, how many, are in green, uh, Mr. Creasely, is how many are available? So that, that five's already loaded in there. Jonah and I was, we were playing with.
Where's the fifth one, it's what I'm just.
We're only, we're only going to tap into four because if you come over and you look at the, what color would you call that?
Well, that's the, the fuchsia. The fuchsia color, that's what's having me confused, there's four there now.
That's how many, that's how many of those five that we're going to use.
Okay, where's our other day then? Are we, are we just, because if I total up all of these in this box, going down all these boxes, uh, it totals up twenty, well, it'd be twenty-five, you're saying we're only going to use one, so it would total twenty-four.
Well, that, that five in there really doesn't go into that total of twenty. That, that's what's confusing because you think, yeah, because you think, you look at that five, you're thinking, well, that's twenty-five, that's not twenty.
Well, that's one, so it actually is twenty-four.
Since it's extra time or accrued time, those, those doesn't really, those days don't really count.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, where that five is, and off to the right it has a four in fuchsia, uh, that really, that, that's really twenty-four days, right?
Right.
Okay, that's, uh.
I'm following you, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we're what, Ted, we're, really what we're doing here is we're, we're going to have students in school for a hundred and seventy-six days, a hundred and eighty days, because how many days is required that you can use your crew time, um, in place of the instructional, replacement instructional day. So that's what's happening there.
That one, that one day had me, but I, now I see the four on the other side, okay.
We've noticed now, it's because several other counties have, have put their calendars out there, I've been, uh, looking at them online, just visiting county websites and I've noticed several counties are looking to do something similar to what we're discussing right now. So they're either, those professional learning days are separate days altogether outside of their two-hour early dismissals for faculty senate, like they're doing both of those, two-hour dismissals and P L days. And some of, some of the counties are doing all-day-long, um, P L days for, on the same day that faculty senates.
The difference is this year, we are using the accrued time to make up for lost days due to weather or other circumstances on an as-needed basis, whereas next year, we won't have those, we would only have one of those days available to use, like we've used a couple, we're talking about using a couple this year because four are built into the calendar.
Well, no, that's, yeah, boards now have a total of ten days of accrued time that can be used. So you have an opportunity to use five days to make up for lost instruction.
Okay.
You also have another opportunity for five days where teachers report, do their professional development or trainings and students stay home.
Uh-huh.
So there's a total of ten days in there.
So you could add five more like you did this year, still, next year?
Right. There would be, there would be an opportunity.
If you needed them.
If we needed them.
On top of the four fuchsia.
On top of what's already there.
I'm going to get excited over that.
Excuse me. Well, I didn't see, I, I have to explain my yardstick.
Okay.
Because I was going to.
You're powers. Jeff, the number of, the actual number of instructional days when students are present and actual instruction is a hundred and seventy-six?
Right.
Okay. All right. Because, you know, I've, we've talked about this and, uh, and you've explained and you alluded to it there a moment ago, to how attendance, student attendance is not very good on. Take it away from here. It's not very good when we have, uh, early outs, but this calendar would eliminate early dismissals.
Eliminate, wouldn't do it.
And so this year.
Unless it was because of high water or whatever.
Well, but I'm talking about planned early dismissals, let's phrase it that way. This would eliminate planned early dismissals. And if we were to, uh, compute the number of hours that are taken up in our early, uh, dismissals for professional reasons, this year, it comes in, what, twenty-four hours or something like that?
That's right.
Okay. So the way we're doing it now by dismissing early, we're really losing almost the equivalent of three or four days anyway, right?
Correct, school days.
So really, by doing it this way and having them all day long without any early dismissal, you're not really losing instructional time in the way we do it now versus next year's proposed calendar.
That's right.
Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Now, I like this myself because for a lot of reasons. One, uh, the early dismissal, and I think these two-hour, three-hour out can confuse everybody, um, and not having that, I think is a good thing. The other being that it permits principals and you guys here at the central office to plan for professional learning activities on a long-range basis, you know, rather, and also gives ample time in a school day to do that. Uh, I know Mr. Wilkerson knows when you're trying to do something in two or three hours and, you know, you've got people coming in from bus duty and this, that and the other time to get all your faculty in there, uh, you don't have much time to actually do something, plus faculty senate meetings are in there. But if I, if you have a, a whole day there, then those principals can plan, maybe have speakers come in or do some worthwhile activities that they have time to do. In addition, then here at the board office, you all might have a half a day where you all plan to bring certain teachers in to do something, right?
Right.
I mean, I like all of those aspects to it, I, I think it's a, you're not really losing, uh, instructional time the way we do it now, but it's just gives, gets more planned in the way it's done and both for at the school level and here at the county level and for parents also. They don't have to be always asking one another, you know, who's this week when we have a three-hour out, you know, and that kind of thing. Uh, and having faculty senates incorporated in with it just makes it much clearer to me, I like that.
And another thing I think it does that Mr. Creasely alluded to is particularly in light of budgetary issues and whereas the former RISA provided a lot of our professional development, we're not sure what our new cooperative will be able to do on that front. In this instance, where you have complete days away from school, you could plan county-wide professional development on those days at, say, the high school, so that for a minimum expenditure, you could get a lot of professional development for everyone.
Well, what we, that's the point, what we discussed here, it'd been a great this current year, Mr. King, had we had this time for our leader in need.
Leader in need.
I mean, that, that would have been an aw, an awesome opportunity to be able to, uh, provide training for our teachers instead of the manner in which we end up having to schedule.
Many, many years ago, uh, one, uh, I thought the kind of clever thing that the county did in the way of professional development was to, uh, this is on a high school level, was to get, for instance, all of your language arts teachers together, just to, to discuss among themselves the things they were doing, you know, in their particular school, your science teachers together, your math teachers together, uh, for an entire day. Uh, and I can remember that, that just was just a wonderful experience, a great learning experience when you could have, uh, have, have them learn something that, uh, being a science teacher, that, that they were doing in the way of laboratory work in, you know, say, Hamlin High School or Guyan Valley High School. And it was, to me, mu, a much better learning experience for the teacher than some of the planned programs that we now have, I'm sorry, just to say that.
At that time, Larry, we had department heads in those areas.
Right. Exactly.
Well, how long had it been, I mean, it used to be faculty senate days were they long and there were six of them. And, uh, we moved away from that a few years ago and went to these two-hour early dismissals. It, it's, it's nice to have that time, it's, it's very beneficial, as you were pointing out, to do those types of activities. And this, this will enable, enable us to be able to do so. We're, 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 we're sorry. Loss of title to funding that we use for professional development is the only way, we're told, so we won't have the money to pay the stipends after school and Saturdays and so forth, so putting it in will help us tremendously too.
A lot of people don't like to come to this anyway. I mean, we've got a stock.
Some principal years ago would come in and.
Really?
Well, Jeff, this hundred and seventy-five instructional day they're talking about up for now, does that just apply to this year or next year? No, I saw that bill the other day. I did not know that there was a bill out there looking at the calendar again, because when I, when I.
I didn't know more just to talk about this year on the calendar, issues going on or?
Well, it's, it, from what I understand, that it would take effect July one. And the big piece about that that I read, um, and I just kind, I scanned the bill, I didn't read it entirely, but it talks about, if you're accruing time like we are, that once the assessment's over.
Yep.
Students stay home.
Yep.
The school year ends for, for students immediately.
Even if you've used your accrued time for other reasons?
Yeah.
This bill hasn't gone anywhere.
It's alive.
Well, it's, it's, it's going back.
So let's see, you accrue a minute extra per day countywide and you get a quit score after the assessment.
You have to accrue, you have to be accruing at least thirty minutes a day, and that's at every school.
That makes no sense though, I mean, if, if you have minimum, minimal instructional days, I can see allowing accrued time to meet that minimum, but to say if you accrue this time and you've used it to make up for other days or used it for professional learning, when your assessment's over, you can call it quits for the year, even if you only have a hundred and seventy in classroom or accrued use days?
Now, if I understood correctly what I was reading, it takes away some of the other options.
Okay.
Okay, it, it takes away like the snow packet days we talked about, some districts out there doing something like, that wouldn't be an option. Uh, it, uh, it eliminates how many of those ten days that you can use to make up for lost instruction. It basically is saying, instead of doing that during the course of the year to make up for lost instruction, you're saving those five days to the end of the year.
Okay, so you couldn't use that on.
Right, so it wouldn't be an additional five days on top of what we're to have, it would be kind of realigning what the bill currently, the law currently says and how.
So if, I'm sorry, Jeff, I mean, if we adopt this calendar for twenty eighteen nineteen as proposed, it will, unless something changes, it will provide for more instructional hours days than we think might be required in that county, in that law?
Right, that's right.
So, we, we could adjust backwards?
We can't.
Okay.
So we'll just have to wait and see.
Now, does you know, does that proposed bill, um, still have the nine days to make up time in, you know, your six O S?
Oh, yes, that, that wouldn't go away. It, it's, it's all in how you're able to use.
Or how you utilize that.
Yeah, this is a.
But also in that, and I bet, Bill also is, uh, going to give you permission to make the days longer, school day longer.
Well, you could, the, the current law already allows for that to happen.
Well, that was mentioned in that bill too, that.
Yeah. Uh, evidently there are school districts out there, they do not have an eight-hour day, we do.
Yeah. What do you mean they don't have an eight-hour?
There are, there are some districts out there where all their employees don't work an eight-hour day.
How do they get their plane fare?
I don't know how, it's on the service side. We, we know one situation in particular where the aides were all hired in a school district where they just work a seven and a half hour day.
There are two court cases about that.
It's not, so that, it's, it's not even a, an, a factor for us, where, where we need to be, so.
Well, I am, uh, proponent of having instructional days. I, I'm, I'm not a proponent of using accrued time. Um, I don't think I ever will be convinced of what that is. We as a nation need to have more instructional time, not less, if we're going to compete internationally. Um, I graduated from high school on June the twenty-second and people looked at me like, are you kidding me? Uh, and we got out the day before everybody else did, so everybody else in the school got out the next day on June the twenty-third. Uh, so, you know, we were going, we had instructional time, but, um, I'm getting away from my thought here, but anyway, if, and, but I'm in favor of this, um, four days of accrued time for the purposes you're saying, but, that being said, me personally, I am in favor if, if we have poor weather or whatever, of making sure that we use these nine days to make up school before we ever think about using an accrued day. Now, I know that's not popular for some people, uh, because, once again, if we're already at a hundred and seventy-six and we start using the available five, if we use those, we're, we're having a hundred and seventy-one days of instruction and I just think that's counterproductive, it's getting away from, you know, we want to have summer school, we want to have after-school programs, all these things to reinforce and provide more instructional time for kids, and then we would be having less, uh, actual instructional times. Uh, that, I just, you know, I like what we're doing here for the reasons we said before, but I hope we don't ever get to the point where we have to use accrued time. My belief is still that that accrued time law was developed for those counties that are in the mountainous regions that miss twenty or more days in a school year, they use their nine available days here, uh, that are built into the calendar, and they're still ten days short of meeting the, the maximum that they have to meet, and they're forced to go up into June, way up into June. Uh, and I feel for those people, so I, I guess when, just my belief may not be accurate, that when this law was developed, they couldn't really pick out whoever would allow Tucker County and Pocahontas and this county and that county to do that and not allow everybody to do it. So they made it a statewide, made it permissible statewide, um, and therefore, you know, our, but I, I think we have employees and I guess some, I might agree, I would think so, if I were one, that think that we ought to use accrued time that, that, you know, as our first option rather than using these other days that are made, that make up for school. Uh, you know, I just think that, and instructional time is important, we have a lot of, uh, other interruptions and whatever that may occur anyway, and we need to kind of make those safer if we can and use the nine make-up days from the hundred and seventy-six if this calendar stays and this new law doesn't factor in, uh, before we use accrued days. But others may disagree with me and I understand that, but that's the way I feel about that. Thank you.
Mild and dry.
If you wouldn't cost nothing, it wouldn't be a problem.
It wouldn't be a problem with it. Be so simple. But, uh, you know, it, it is, it's a good calendar and like I said, uh, I think we committed to do a job.
Friend, if you have to stick around, you just can't leave. It's so much fun.
It's so much fun.
Yeah, it is.
Never a dull moment. The fridge calendar here. Oh, God, I gotta see what that one's saying.
About the time you think you got this down, it changes.
And I don't even remember who it was told me there was a bill out there, and I.
Well, it's something, but it's in paper, paper day about it.
Someone sent it to me.
But I didn't, unlike you, I didn't read it.
I saw it on the news.
Do you know anything about Kentucky?
About, yeah, about Kentucky, Heather says it's up in the air that the teachers are wanting to stay home also, and she said it's not gonna pass, because they have to be where the students can, is that what you're talking about?
Talk about that where they was.
Doing homework at home.
Yeah, like they wanted to eliminate that from, so you're saying that it probably is not gonna pass?
She doesn't think it's going to, because at home, some of the students can't get in touch with the teachers to ask questions, and they want them at school where the students can converse with them and get answers to questions and things like that, if that's what you're talking about, I think.
Yeah, the snow packet.
Yeah.
Non-traditional instructional days, what they call it.
She says it's not going, not going to work. They're not gonna get us to stay home.
That's interesting.
Get back to what Rowley mentioned a while ago about using these O days as either spring break or the school year. I think we also have already made an effort this year, and that may have been for not, because we still may have to make up days. I'm not sure yet. I don't guess anybody else is either, the days we missed recently for the outage. But, you know, we've tried to, in the days we've made up so far, we've used the available OS days and all those, and then we've gone, we've tried to do things, and we used one accrued day. And I think that was all in an effort to keep from extending the school year if we could, if at all possible, because none of us wanted to do that. And so, as of before these recent days for the outage, we had, or the stoppage, we had done everything we could to try to keep from extending the school year. But now, I guess we're, you know, we may or may not be forced to go in it. We don't know about the.
We'll just have to wait and see what happens.
From the State Department, how to handle those days.
I mean, we're just kind of monitoring right now and assessing what's.
But I just wanted to point out, as I know, it may have sounded like I was speaking from two sides there, that we have used one accrued day. The reason I felt comfortable using that was because we were able to use it and not extend the school year, you know, because there are those days at the end of the year that we could use, and we may end up, or we may not.
And I know we've already made some decisions, you know, how we're gonna make up some days that we've lost, but not knowing what may happen with the current situation, who's to say that the board may not have to come back and revise what has happened already. I mean, I don't know.
No, the unions are meeting the governor at two.
Yeah, I heard Mr. Baker spotted that on my phone.
Yeah.
Two o'clock.
So, if, I'm gonna shut up.
Oh, my.
You just get in deep with these.
Ah, there are times you just shut your mouth and keep your thoughts to yourself.
Everybody should learn that.
Let's just hope, let's be positive, the meeting will be very productive, and, right? Positive power by positive thinking.
In the morning, the girls go to school.
Y'all, I certainly hope so. I want them to get every instructional minute they can get, every day and every minute.
That's right.
Sean wants him to go, too.
Yes, he does.
He's got seven there, so every.
Oh, wow.
I don't know, I'll have them at home. I mean, I had a really, really, really busy work month leading up to this week, and this week's kind of flexible, so I'll have mine at home.
Yeah, but you don't have seven of them.
No, just three. Shoot, me and my girl play video games at three o'clock in the morning.
They're instructional related, weren't they?
Absolutely. Fine motor skills, technique, teamwork, team development, leadership skills.
I knew they wouldn't be.
Just don't ask about games we're playing. I'm sorry, Jeff.
I don't know.
We're digressing.
Okay, when is the next public hearing?
Uh, next Tuesday.
Okay, Nick. So, the public is welcome to come and give their two cents on this proposal, right? Is this advertised in the local paper?
Yes.
So, everyone's, is able to see it there? Is it on our online site?
County website, it's been, it's been on there for three weeks now.
So, anyone, we encourage them to look at either of those. You know, if they have any questions or whatever, call them, or, of course, they're always welcome to come to the hearing and voice their approval or use for. Seems to have a lot of positive things to it, Mr. Baker.
Well, just hold your breath that there's not some changes coming.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else? If not, we'll go on to the next public hearing. And complete the first hearing.
Light coming on, folks.
Yeah, they're gonna open my eyes.
We got new lights yesterday.
New LEDs, I'm wondering.
My goodness, Greg, take some of the bulbs out.
They cost less, too, don't they, Greg?
Six dollars thirty-six pieces.
Only need a flash for now.
Those are pulling less than one ampere current.
And they last for like twenty years, a bulb, or ten or something?
Yeah.
Well, then, just speaking to Mr. Gosner, he's next on our agenda. We're gonna talk about the LCHS field update.
Maybe something else, we'll see.
It seemed like I was just here the other day.
Just your imagination.
Yeah. It's hard to hold, it's me, Kip, but I'll try.
We just gonna get that road.
It's my pointer.
I just touched on some things that we've been working on. It's kind of, I'm kind of together, so. The modular building at Midway, it's out for bid. It should come up, I think, the twenty-third March there. Uh, the crack monitors are in at Duval, they were installed on Sixteenth through February. We'll get our first month, baseline is all set up. We'll get our first reading on those in May. Sewer plants are due to go out at the end of this month. Roofing projects, I just, Mr. Ellis and I have been working on that quite a bit. Uh, those are due to go out in the paper Friday, and they'll run from seven to twenty-one, with the bid openings on the twenty-seventh, so. MIP project's another, another one that Mr. Ellis and I are working on. He's working on the financial part. We were, we were not sure on the MIP. Mr. Meekip and I have talked about this several times. We thought at first they were gonna accept roofing projects and some other thing, but they, they're not accepting any more roofing projects for the MIP. So, what we're doing is the window upgrade for Midway. First floor windows, second floor windows are gonna be upgraded. So, we're doing it with MIP. That one is due March the fifth. That kind of hit us real quick, like, but. One of the things on the roofing project that we looked at, the gentleman's doing, helping us with our roofing projects, got a lot of experience with this, and we're putting an alternate in for West Hamlin. West Hamlin roofs come in at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We didn't put it in as far as our needs project. What he's doing is, if we have extra money, there's a possibility that he thinks that we could go back to the FDA and say, we got this money, can we not go on and do West Hamlin? So, if we can save four hundred and some thousand dollars, we'll see, but we won't know until, but that's an alternate that we put in there. Looking at, we've discussed about the playground equipment here for the preschool and bathrooms. I have some estimates on, we can take it down and, and things like that, and save almost four thousand dollars if we do it ourselves. But in order to follow BRIM specifications, the quote I got was for them to put it in according to the BRIM specification, which is what we need to go by. Their cost would be around six thousand dollars for them to reinstall it and concrete it and get the fall area within the specifications. Soccer road, I have been working on the, we talked about doing the road over towards the soccer area. I do have the purchasers already for the hundred-ton fifty-seven gravel, and then, also had number two, sixty-ton of number two limestone. And what we, what we got left is some field dirt, it was around the hundred and forty-ton of field dirt. Estimate on that was a thousand dollars, and then our dozer estimate for, for a week at nine fifty. So, we're in place to start that. The weather, I'm probably looking at April. We gotta have some dry days to do this. You just can't go there and push much, but, so we've got that on. It's ready to go as far as waiting for the weather to break on that.
And Greg, let me ask you, with that window, will the existing access still be available? Okay, so we'll be dead in the heart of soccer season. But, no, 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 we won't. The youth soccer will be, they won't, Sean.
Yeah, first game is usually the last Saturday in April.
Okay.
Are you gonna do anything with the soccer field during this workday?
There wasn't plans for that. It was planned to make the road come in there to the, to the soccer field.
Or is there any plan to, I knew last fall, we talked about putting more dirt into the lower end of the soccer field and sowing it. Do we have any plans?
We hadn't, we didn't get a quote for that part of it, yeah. We can look at that.
I think there's.
I mean, we, if we have people in place that, I can get the dirt, but, but, you know, we have a lot of these projects going on to, if we have somebody in place that could place it, that'd be great.
Well, I mean, I, that really wouldn't necessarily have to coincide with the roadwork, for that matter. I mean, it could be done independently with that.
Well, if you have a dozer there with you, it makes a lot easier.
Well, yeah, but, oh, I'm thinking, my colleague at the India is the expert on sowing of grass, but it seems like you're gonna have to put your soil in and sow grass fairly soon, aren't you, though? Have it come out, aren't you, Larry, especially if everyone gets into the spring?
Usually have, traditionally in West Virginia, we usually have a dry spell in the middle of April. Trust me, because I lose a lot of trees, but, you know, it doesn't happen every year.
When do you think would be the best time to actually sow the grass?
Just about any time now.
Now?
Yeah.
Well, you were talking about that in April, where you had a drought, but I didn't know that.
Yeah, that may kill your grass that you sow.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, I mean, realistically, though, i-if we tried to add dirt to the concession stand end of the soccer field, and this road project kicks off latter part of April, Larry, with that, I mean, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the youth soccer should be played on the lower two, I mean, up, what I call it, the river two-thirds end of the field.
That's what we did last year, and we moved, we moved the middle, the middle school games, well, they're not middle school games. It's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade aged kids, they played at Lions Club Field. It was, it's not great for selling concessions and stuff on a Saturday morning, but that's what we ended up doing. And we used three-quarters of the field for the small four grades, K, sorry, preschool, K one, two, three, and four, five. They played.
And the same, the same quarter end that wasn't available to you last year would be the end where this work is that we're talking about.
Yeah.
And Larry, to.
Let's clarify the area that you're talking about. You said by the concession stand area where all, where they pushed all that rock over in there? Blocks and things like that.
If you look now, you can, you can see the brown.
The field itself on the, yeah, the actual field.
The actual soccer field, by the, by the fence in there. That's what we're talking about.
The playing area, I mean, everything from the fence back is a, has traditionally been a swamp. Travis put in some dirt there last year and sowed, and that's what Sean's talking about, but it was, it wasn't near enough. And then they actually came to us at some point, I want to say, some point in the last four or five months, and asked if there was anything we could do to help with that, because with what Travis put in and sowed, sowed the grass themselves, it helped, but still, you get a rain, and that, that end of the field is, has always been treacherous, and water.
Now, you're talking about in the area that they tried to see a couple of years ago, the year before.
Last year.
Last four, five months, yeah, eighteen months ago.
So, you're wanting more dirt in that area there.
I think that's what Dallas said.
Yeah, that's what Dallas Travis said.
Well, you go out there right today, and you can see what we're talking about.
Right.
If you're even up by the high school and looking down.
Well, one of the things that I looked at when they built the concession, they built the concession lower than the field. You're gonna always have water issues. I don't, we provided the pipe and all that for, for Mr. Plumlee to put the drain in there to get that water away from the concession stand. Concession stand is about sixteen inches below that field. It should have been, if you raised concession stand after, you'd be able to put more dirt around. Here's the problem, you put a lot of dirt around, you can do it inside the field, but if you go around concession stand, you're not gonna be able to go in the door, because the concession stand is lower than the field.
I don't think about turners anything outside the fence.
Yeah, I mean, we stay inside, and if we, with the drains that was put in there, it should.
And that's what he talked about, was the field itself.
Yeah, the field itself, and inside the fence.
That's what I was a little confused with, he kept talking about on that end with field, and that's not near it.
No, I just referenced, I just used that to reference the, the river end versus the concession stand.
I got you.
I'm not good with north, south, east, west.
Let's see, I'll tell you a story. Up at Hart's Pre-K eight, they're writing on the switches that turn the basketballs, all that stuff, right? North, south, they, you know, they're marked, but their north was not. The SBA wrote us up, said you have to, have to paint over it. You can't write on it.
That was the trick of the opposition.
It's whether, it's kind of like you're standing west or right wherever your north is. Yeah, we, we'll look at that, but that's, that's where we're at on the soccer road, is doing that.
Well, Larry, let me ask one more thing, now shut up on this issue. Let's say we got dirt moved in there, it was spread, leveled, and planted some kind of grass sufficient to stand up to the wear and tear of a season of soccer practice and games there by the girls. Does that give enough grow time for that grass to properly root from, say, middle of May through first? Well, I mean, actually, they have practice in August. You have the, what, three weeks, two weeks of practice in August, and then, I assume you could avoid it then, but practice, I'm sorry, practice in June, is what I meant to say. And then you have, actually, practice starts in August. So, let's say you planted that in middle to late May, like, grass.
Are you gonna water it in mid-May?
I don't know.
You don't wanna plant anything.
You'd have to.
I don't know why, you'd have to, you'd have to irrigate.
If you watered it, you might be able to get away with it.
I think.
I mean, we could, we could plan on, we could plan on, the thing now, if you would take, you have to take a section of that fence down, take trucks out there to dump it in the center in order to spread it, because the top of it should be crowned to where you have the runoff. Right now, you have no runoff.
Yeah.
It all, it all coming to that one stall.
Yeah.
You've gotta put it in there and get your runoff to where you can keep that off there. But getting trucks in there right now would just, I mean, it'd be nightmare.
You could do it, you wet.
You're just gonna really make a mess, but we could get it in there, like I say, we, we have manpower issues whether we could get it in there, and if there are people that can help with the spreading and things like that.
So, you're saying if you could provide the dirt itself, that maybe make it, get some volunteers to help move it.
Right, you got a Boak program, you got a lot of things over there that get involved with it.
I mean, I, I didn't, I wasn't suggesting we're gonna do this now, do it separately. Just thinking about if we do it in conjunction with the road project, which makes a lot of sense, because you have the equipment there that could do everything that needed to be done to bring in dirt anyway.
We got to that point, if we had the dirt there and taking that section down, a chance, you know, according to the weather, dry, we could take that dozer in there and move a lot of that around and kind of pack it down.
Oh, I think it makes sense.
It's so low there in that area there, but.
Well, I think it makes sense, and I think if you ask Dallas and Travis that, if the options weren't having it done then, or, you know, not having it done, that they, they could deal with having some bald spots and areas that weren't as grassy this year as they'd like.
Derek? I'll look at it and see.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing we've been dealing with is getting ready for the cooling season. We talked about the chiller contract, it's in here, and I'm real pleased with how our contract came in, and Derek, the one that does it, is very reputable what he does. He does a great job. The chiller pump, we've been working on a lot of chiller pumps at Hamlin. The impellers and the voids that they go into are wore out, so we, we replaced, we replaced a lot of those. We rebuilt a lot of the hot water chilled pumps with kits at two hundred and forty dollars, which you normally would take five thousand dollars per unit, so. These are the ones we had to replace the whole thing because they wallowed out so bad. But we were able to get them through a joker for about twenty-seven hundred, so we got really good savings here. The other problem we've had recently is that West Hamlin, West Hamlin has a, they have a boiler system that's a hot waters. That's a, one system does that whole school. I was surprised when I got into this. But the boiler system, it's like a boiler, and then you have a valve and mixing system that mixes it for the school, for the kitchen, everywhere. All comes from one location, but we had, if you ever, city water, everything was all corroded up, wasn't working. So, we had to replace all the mixing valves and all this assembly and that, to get it back up to working properly, but, yeah, that's all it is. It just kind of amazed you, if you ever look at, you think city water, when you start pulling something apart, and you see all the corrosion and the things in it, it just blew me away that how mad that was, so, for city water. Mr. Reynolds has to talk too much.
He's gonna go in there. Lots of things get said. Lots of things get said.
Yeah, lots of things get said, yeah. The football field, when we talk about the football field, we was talking about that. I'm looking at it, and, uh, I got a quote from the people that done hydroseeding to doing the football field. This is a maintenance quote. They'll provide six visits a year, they provide fertilization and weed control to get, it's at the point now where it needs it right now, like you're talking about, now's where the grass is starting to take off. So, we need to get them involved with this to get our grass growing as strong as we can get it growing for the first year. That's what we talked about, we get a good first year, I think then you'll have a really good field. They, they're, they've offered us, uh, the cost of forty-five hundred to give us six visits to keep track on it, make sure it's growing like it should, anything we need to know about it, they'll notify us, and we'll make changes as we go along. So, I'm, I'm gonna recommend that we go with this, uh, maintenance contract with them for the football field. At least for this year, just to get the field, uh, properly growing the way it should be.
And when you said, when you first started, that they would provide fertilizer, et cetera. But then a moment ago, you said they would keep track of whether it's growing like it should, and let us know what needs to be done.
The first thing they're gonna do is, the first part is to be a lime and fertilizer. Then every visit after that, they'll come out and, and put the material and the weed it or whatever that needs to be done. To keep it weed free, so the grass that we, that we chose for this can grow without being overrun by crabgrass and things like that. If there's, if there's something else that needs to be applied, they will let us know. But this is, this whole contract is supposed to take care of everything to make it come up to the year the way we expect it to.
Because with lime, Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but you may need to lime that field multiple times during the course of a year to get the add, to get the acidity where you want it to be, so.
There's, there's the, the things that they're doing, I can get into more detail every thing that they're doing, but, um.
Well, I mean, it just, my, my question's really this, they come out, they do their testing, first time, they add lime, they add fertilizer. They come out the second time, and they use lime and fertilizer the second time, is that generally covered, or?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
But I'll clarify all that, it was my understanding, everything we're gonna pay to get this to grow the way it's supposed to grow, they're gonna cover it for this one year price for this.
They're gonna cover crabgrass too?
Yeah, they're gonna keep the, the crabgrass out of it, that's the whole process of it.
What are they gonna use for, the chemicals for that? How it's gonna get acidic, right?
No, they just, they're just talking about, well, the seed we've gone in for all these seeds to germinate together. They, they're making sure that we get nothing foreign in there so that it can grow. I went on and got a quote for the two point six acres around that that was not hydroseeded when this was done. Uh, for them to, for this company to come out, I've called several others, it's really hard to find a hydroseeder that's not in a contract with your lawn service to, to do a project such as this, so. I've got some calls in and out in the state for ZMM, see if they can help us. Twelve thousand four hundred for, uh, two point six acres to hydroseed it, and then two thousand four hundred dollars to blow the straw on it to protect it from any further erosion that's coming in there. I think that's extremely high on that part.
It's fifteen thousand, right?
Yeah, you're going to fourteen thousand dollars around the bat. Now, Mr. Minkin and I met with, uh, Mr. S, uh, Mr. Neil, that's over the Boag at the high school, back in October, October the fifth. And we had an agreement that he was gonna come in and do as part of the class project, this type of thing, be able to seed it and put the straw on it before winter, but that didn't happen. Uh, a couple of emails back to him, hadn't been returned. I would, you know, that's not something, we, we, we don't care to buy the seed and the straw. And I even sent him several emails, I can rent the blower for three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the week. Uh, that would be something possibly the school may wanna take on to help us out with that.
Right, and I'll, and I'll follow up with it, if one returns back.
Yeah, because we talked, we, we discussed this, and we thought it was all gonna be, but it never happened.
Because I had conversations with Mr. Snyder, and, uh, that's what we were gonna do, so.
But this would, if that were done, then this would take care of everything contained within the both fences, right?
Yes, yes. Perfect against erosion and things like that on that, especially on the slope side, so.
Right, now, are we going to, uh, eventually put a, a link fence from the road out to the hillside?
I, I think, we, we stopped at that point, I think we need to take it on into the wooded area. And I think that would protect us even more.
That way you have it on three sides, and you got the left side and rock clip, whatever it is on the other, right?
And we lock it, there's locks on the gates now, and, uh, we talked about that, uh, of course, now, the, the cut down, there's a moldering there, he will have a key to it where he can get in the molder field, and things like that, but. I think that, I think we, we stopped at that point last year, waiting to decide, but I think we need to go on and take it through the wooded area, so. That's all I've got.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
You were disappointingly short today, Brad. I wanted to know more.
I got a list, but I gotta shorten it down, you don't wanna know everything. Every little thing that this.
Ray, don't you two, Bill, don't you all give him grief, you have the pride, hey, listen to Greg.
You talk to him.
I'm like, I've got things to talk about.
You work for him, you gotta talk about it.
Well, Ray's next, so let's see if he can be equally agreed.
I will be really short.
He's been laughing, but he's on that.
I, I must add, your hand is a bit short.
Mr. Ellis, you're gonna do a, you're gonna find hands up, I think you give him some hand down.
Yeah, I put the handout in the packet, where I, I gave it to a friend, and she put it in your packet, so, she did all the work. So, um, I, on the back of this, starting page twenty-four, you got the budget supplements and transfers, I'm not gonna get into that, but it's there, I just, it's in the, the back of that packet that I gave you. It's listed on the bottom line, page twenty-four. That was just trying to feel, I got most of the budgets in, most of the grants have been received. So, I think we put, was Title One in on that, Title One, some special ed money, bunch of little grants, uh, so, most everything's in, I'm gonna start, I, I think I got another federal grant I gotta put in, but most everything's in. We'll just make sure we get the budgets right, and draw down money whenever we can. We have to get those grants in, accepted, and budgets in before we can start pulling money from them, so. We drew down close to a million dollars in the last week and a half, I think, that we were funding federal programs, so we drew that down, which helped us out. If you look on the second page, you can see at the end of January, the cash balance was almost three point seven million dollars. With all the bank accounts combined, three point six seven seven million. You remember a couple of months ago, I was talking to you, and I said that, you know, we were around five million dollars in cash, and that would just keep falling until we get into February, and that's exactly what's happened. Last year at this time, we were at two million dollars at the end of February. So, you know, this is the end of January, right now, we're at two point eight million, so we're eight hundred thousand dollars better than what we were last year, so. Um, you know, state aid will start kicking in again, it'll go up in March and April, I think. And hopefully, our tax checks get a little bit larger, because they have each of the past several years that I've looked at. So, I, I think we're gonna be okay with the cash now. That's an I think, I'm pretty sure, or where we were are better than we have been the last couple of years. When I look at tax collections, and we've talked about this several times, we're always wondering where that excess levy, how much we're collecting on yet, so that we could fund the certain projects that were in the lev, original levy call that was voted on. If you look at all of our total compared to where we were at the previous four years, we're as good, well, we're, we're better than all but one, which was two years ago.
Are you on a particular?
I'm on page five, I'm sorry, I'm on page five, on the top right-hand corner, that circle, five and. If you look at seventeen, eighteen, the report totals is four point four million dollars, which is more than what it was last year, which is four point three seven million, and we're under fifteen, sixteen. Fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we weren't that great as far as the collections at this time. Now, it looks like we've done really well compared to last year, but you remember what I told you, looking on some of those reports, I kept seeing that it was collections from prior years? Well, when you look at the totals for that, down about six lines on the left, it says excess levy prior year, and we've doubled what it was last year. And that's, I think it's, it's just a, I don't think as the year goes along, we're gonna collect as much as what we even budgeted. I, I, that's gotta fall at some point, I would think, and I asked the sheriff's office about that, and they just don't know. Can you see where I'm at?
Yeah, we're looking, we're just looking at the difference point now, like, four years ago.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just, I just happened to notice that one day, and, uh, so we'll see, we oughta get another check. They, they come in around the ninth of the month, so ninth of March, we'll see what February was like.
Should, should they not all go up and down proportionally, like?
That's what I would have thought.
If I pay my taxes, I can't say, well, I, I'd like to pay the excess levy this month, I don't want to pay the Hamlin City tax. You pay the whole thing, right?
I'm thinking that some people are just paying stuff late, and that's what this is.
Okay. Okay.
They're not paying this year's, they're paying last year's.
Okay.
Where, but in the previous three years, they weren't doing as much.
That's, that's, yeah. So, now, if that keeps up, and everybody keeps paying last year's taxes and this year's taxes, we're gonna be good. And if that happens, and we meet our revenue numbers, and then maybe we see them, we'll start putting money back in at, at the end of the year. I'll put the money back in that we took out of the budget for, like, capital improvement and things like that.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, I'll look at that, at the end of this, it's gonna be done about the last day of June, and see where the revenue numbers are, and then if, if we're in excess, we'll put it back in the capital improvement. That way, it'll help us out long forward. It won't just be put into the, the carryover, it'll be put into those accounts. So, but, you know, what, what I caught a few months ago, it just, it's, it's been a trend, it was even the same thing, I think, last month. It was just higher than what it had been. The sheriff's office, because we went in last year and asked those questions about what's different this year than last year, they always send me a comparison, they say, hey, here's this month's for fiscal year eighteen, here's this month's for fiscal year seventeen. Of course, I have records of that and spreadsheets that I can go back and look at the differences in it. And I do that every time I get one of those checks, and some odd reason, or just getting them. Receive more money for last year's than what we had in years past, and not as much this year's. So, that, that collection's actually down. So, if that trend continues, then we'll be fine, if not, then. We'll probably be close to the budget, the budget to go in there number.
All right, and then I know you can explain this to things, don't you always pay your taxes for the prior year? When I go pay taxes, it isn't for the, for the current year, you're paying for the prior year.
Well, maybe then that's two years back. That's the only way I can explain it, yeah, you, you do, you pay for the last year. So, maybe it's looking back for two years.
So, kinda what, what some of this may be, and you all that are more political historians may be able to tell me this. When did the big, uh, reap, or the big adjustment and appraisals take place? What year was that, that, that the assessor had to?
That's about four years ago, wasn't it?
So, if you think that really takes two years from the time, because that was an incremental process. It was done over a couple, three years, wasn't it? So, part of it may be that the, the values were increased, and you're paying a year, I mean, if, if you're on time, you're paying one year behind on your taxes. A lot of people run late, and if they're paying, if they're paying now to avoid it going to the sheriff's sale, they're paying two years' taxes ago, which would start to catch you up on the first year, or maybe second year of the increased assessment, or increased evaluation.
And a lot of people are that, when it's in the paper, and it's on a wholesale, that's when they're paying.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, it, it changed the, I mean, people that own property that they didn't use before suddenly found themselves with tax bills that were incredible compared to what they paid. I mean, for unused, just, just a bare mountainside now is taxed as equivalent to what a small home used to be.
I think that was about two thousand thirteen or something, maybe, in terms, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Oh, after that, I thought it was after that, I might be getting wrong.
He took office in twenty, start of twenty thirteen, and about a year in.
Yeah, that was about twenty fourteen.
Yeah, twenty fourteen.
Fourteen, fifteen, so this is the right timeframe, really, for. Yep, let's see it pick up.
I think he might have just explained that. Yeah, and I guess that there's a lot of, um, uh, there are more delinquencies apparently now than there have been in a while, because of the reasons that I alluded to, some of the lands at one time weren't really ideal for whatever different reasons.
For anything.
And now people are just saying, heck with that, I'm not doing it.
I can't, I can't afford to keep the, the family hundred acres that's been in the family for a hundred years, so it's all mountainside, and the taxes on it are so much that I can't just keep a percent of it back, and people are letting property go.
People have eighteen months to redeem property, too.
So, a lot of stuff that may have been sold in the first year of taxes really going up, people may be redeeming that. So, a lot of reasons, I think, I think what we've talked about has a lot to do with it, though, we've probably nailed ninety-five percent of it here. But if that's true.
Shouldn't they all go up though? Shouldn't each line item go up and not just the excess? That's why I don't care.
It is puzzling, I mean, I'll, there's numbers too, to see if it makes sense.
Like Sean said, you don't just say, I'm gonna pay my excess levy this month.
Like this year and last year, they're broadly similar, except the excess levy goes up dramatically more.
I do see that.
That is weird.
Good question, Guy. But if you go back to thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen, fifteen, look how small the excess levy is in comparison to the.
Yeah.
The, the general numbers.
Well, that's the same, well.
We're having a banner year right now.
I think Mr. Brownie might have to explain that.
Several more months to wait.
Yeah.
Can't remember what my budget was meant to be. Yeah, they weren't loving, and they are here.
A lot of people's car licenses become big, you gotta pay the taxes to get your license on a car.
Hundred and fifty dollars for a Prius. Great car, love it, kills me, have to pay.
Do taxes or your licensing?
My licensing.
Yeah.
That's the one they jacked up the most. Fifty, sixty dollars for everyone else, a hundred and fifty for a Prius.
Is that because you get a tax break, do you have?
I don't get a tax break. The theory is I'm paying less tax on the gas that I use. That was, uh, delegate Muffet explained it to me that way.
So, you're trying to be a fireman, like, just.
There you go, there you go.
Can we get you a driver of his car?
Hence the angry editorial six months ago.
It wasn't personal, that was.
No, not at all.
What else you got, Ray?
That's it, I guess we're gonna have our levy meeting next month, so we'll get that information from Guy and, uh, the levy rates.
Says, says, or lame leg?
Yeah.
Let me ask you, Title Two was mentioned a long ago. Now, Mr. King's here also, we have Title Two money still remaining, or?
Yes, sir.
No?
Yes, sir, that money will stay with us in what we have currently, if that budget is approved. Because when I was in Philadelphia a couple of weeks ago, this current year's budget has not been approved officially by the feds. That's what, that was my understanding.
Well, I mean.
Something, if, if it goes to March, then we have that money, but that, that, to answer your question, the Title Two money that we have currently, we will have, and what we don't spend this year, we can carry over forty percent of that next year.
But, so what happens to the other sixty percent we can't carry over?
That's why you don't carry any money over.
That's, well, in this situation, this is why we are trying to do as much professional development as we possibly can. Because we don't want, and, and honestly, the folks in, in Charleston don't want us to give them anything back. They really don't, they really frown on us giving them anything back. Because that's, you know, the purpose of it is, uh, that, you know, we, at, at the same time, we, we don't wanna just waste it, so.
What, so, since they haven't, uh, approved next year's budget in Title Two, and I guess other things too, if none of that money is approved, is, or is there some thinking that none of it might?
There's, what, what I understand, and, and I'll get some clarification on this tomorrow, Mr. Priestley, because I'm going to Building Six to work on another project, um, is that if it's not approved by March, then it's by proxy approved. Now, you're gonna figure, now, I, I, I only, I only. Now, you can figure, now, I, I'm, I, I only, I'm only repeating what I heard.
At the same, at what level though?
At this, the, the money that is allocated to the states is approved whether the feds approve this budget that they haven't approved or not. Now, we're a lot of questions in Philadelphia about that. Yes, well, if you try, if you, if you can figure out the federal programs, you're way, way ahead of them.
That's one of the reasons why we had five million dollars a few months ago, and now we're down to two point eight million is because we have to fund those federal programs up until we get those grants. So, I think I still got one for special ed, I'm going to ask for, you know, half a million dollars. But, you know, I just asked for a million a few weeks ago, and it's because we were funding those programs because whenever I got those grants in, then I was allowed to ask for the money, but we already put it in the budget last year, so we were already spending that money. And in any adjustments to that amount, we have to take it, you know, either add or.
That happens every year.
Yeah, you, you spend money you don't have.
By December, you get your grant awards, that's what's unusual about what's going on now.
Correct.
This is just, you know, a unique situation where it may be March.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's what they're saying, if it's not by March, then it, it, it has to, they, they, they say that it's just going to magically be approved if it's not done by March.
Why do they even get through the approval process then? Cause they?
People need jobs.
What's the, if they don't approve here, they do anything else?
Such a jaded comment, can't believe you think that way. Cynical.
You made fun of God.
Yeah, I think he got you by two minutes.
He was asking for it.
All right, thank you, we appreciate it. All right, let's go to the administrative section, have a motion please, Lieutenant Carroll. Brownie seconds that, Mr. Minkin?
It's gone now. I'd have made, there's a contract with VSO Mechanical L L, so we'll provide chiller preventative maintenance for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year based on a low bid of three thousand seven hundred ten dollars, meeting all required specifications. And the agreement is attached. I'd be out of state travel for the following personnel.
And that's all then, Thomas, vague equations down, either one of those? Is that an all yes vote on the personnel items?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, just move to the finance section, please, have a motion? Fred?
Second.
Mary seconds that, Ray?
A, schedule invoices totaling two hundred ten thousand five hundred forty seven dollars and fifty cents. If you got any questions, just let me know, and of course, we just went over the financial statements.
Okay, all right, anybody have anything to discuss on that? If not, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Go to the personnel section, motion please, I'll move it, Brownie, that's my Carol.
Katie, I'd have made leave of absence. I'd be retirement and resignation, giving you an updated sheet, uh, we got four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and sixteen, I'm there now, that, that we know are, are going to be positions for next year. This year.
I've got so many colors, I can't do the sheets.
But, uh, and Mr. Minkin, now, the fact that Mr. Tyree is sworn in and more over everything and uh, we're hoping that we will not have any hearings this year.
We may have one to come up, but we don't think it's going to happen.
Okay, this I'm, I kind of was looking there, so these, perfect for vaginas eighteen, nineteen, now, are you saying those are, you anticipate those being vacancies or do you?
They are vacant.
They are, okay, as this personnel season goes along, will some of those be?
After we, after we uh, meet and make our uh, recommendations to you guys, and you guys vote on it, then we will be posting these positions for next school year. Anything that's, a vote that we know of prior to March one, we cannot post.
I guess what I'm wondering is, of these positions here, are there employees who are currently in those that might be affected and go in, would they, or they have to bid on to get the same job, or are they going elsewhere, or what?
Now, if, for example, if you look at uh, come down to the Gold there, special ed at Guy Valley. Danielle Macon already has that job at West Hamlin for next year. We have a sub in that position. So, we will, the, so the position at Guy Valley is vacant for next year, so we'll be posting the Guy Valley job.
Oh, okay, that's all the way down through here?
All the way down, except when you get down to Hamlin, uh, recommendation, uh, there will be a, unless we get Title One funding, there'll be a recommendation of Title One cut at Hamlin and at third grade because of enrollment. And fortunately, both of those are retiring, so those kind of take care of themselves, we don't have to worry about anybody there. But the rest of the, of, of positions will be there.
Okay, okay, I understand. Okay, anything else, anyone on personnel? If not, is that an all yes vote on the personnel items?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, now we're going to do comments, concerns, how, the board members, do you all have anything? I'm going to say the best for last here. Everybody have anything, okay. Uh, then, uh, we, we have a request for a legal update, Mr. Tyree, Mr. Minkin, or by Mr. Minkin. Support of Mr. Tyree speaking to us, uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session at two twenty two P M?
Yes.
Mr. Baker made the motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith, that an all yes to go into executive session?
Yes.
All right.